Okay, we can get started, please. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Your Pledge of Allegiance to the right, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. My name is Anthony Doyle, I'm town moderator. I'm introducing this stage starting to my right. We have Jeff Milmo, member of the Finance Committee, William Droschina, his chairman, Deborah Merrick, our town clerk, jumping over me. We have Joel Barr, town council. We have Kenneth Walto, town manager. And we have members of the Select Board, John Hurtel Jr., the chair, Robert Bishop, Mark Strout, Edward Holm, and John Boy. This meeting is being recorded, so please understand that. Please also, if you're going to offer anything tonight, please raise your hand to be identified. Please identify yourself by name and street, and we will try to get everybody in this meeting. First item on the agenda is we normally entertain a motion to waive the formal reading of the town warrant. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying no. Thank you. I would note for the record that the warrant has been properly published. It's been posted at Dewey's Public House, Dalton Restaurant, Greenbridge Variety and Convenience Store, the Dalton General Store, the United States Post Office, Herschel Organics, and the Town Hall election board. This is the annual meeting for the town of Dalton. Today is Monday, May 6, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Article 1. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a 10-year contract commencing on July 1, 2020, with the qualified vendors selected by Mass DEP through a competitive bid process for recycling and processing services for the town, subject to the Select Board's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town and subject to town meeting approval in the spring of 2020 for funding for these services or to take any other vote or votes in relation thereto. This is moved by the Select Board. Mr. Hurtel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I read this motion, I just want to make sure everyone knows we do have a microphone room. Mrs. Mitchell, over on the side here. We also have a space down below where you can come up and speak into the mic if you wish as well, if you have any questions. One way or another, we'll get to your question, so that everyone can hear it. Article 1. I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a 10-year contract commencing on July 1, 2020, with the qualified vendors selected by Mass DEP through a competitive bid process for recycling and processing services for the town, subject to the Select Board's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town and subject to town meeting approval for funding for these services.
It's been moved and seconded. Is ready discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi. Richard Paul, I'm six Wolverine Ridge. Just one question. Because it's for 10 years, we're probably going to see, instead of getting a credit per ton, we're going to actually see us having to pay per ton. Is that going to be locked in for the 10 years? Is that something we're looking at? Or is it going to be flexible? Because 10 years is a long time in recycling industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Walto.
The fact is, we don't know yet. We haven't seen the terms and conditions of the proposed contract that's being put out.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Just to follow up to that. The last statement here, it says recyclables. Am I always Tony Hagley, other than Oklahoma Missouri? The recyclables processing fee per ton is highly likely. We don't know what that means at this point. If we vote on this, are we locked in? If indeed, it's exorbitant? Or out of line?
Mr. Walto. DEP is going to try to negotiate this in the best interest of all the communities. There are many, many communities that are involved in materials recycling facility. In the past, we've gotten small checks back for the recyclables brought to the materials recycling facility. But as most of you know, China is no longer taking these recyclables, and they have to be processed. So we'll probably have to pay so that they can be processed locally.
Anyone else? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of Article 1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed by saying no. Passes your hand, Mr. Walto. Somebody said no? Thank you. Okay, passes. Article 2. To see if the town will vote to fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2020, beginning on July 1, 2019, for the revolving funds established in town bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and 1/2, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschina.
I move that the town vote to fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2020, beginning on July 1, 2019, for the revolving funds established in town bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and 1/2, as follows. Plumbing inspector, $15,000. Electrical inspector, $10,000. Pre-warden, planning board, $5,000. Cemetery department, $2,500. Council on Aging and Transport, $20,000. Council on Aging and Programs, $15,000. Cemetery department, $5,000. Legal advertising, $3,000. Parks maintenance, $2,150. And highway department, for the boom mower, $11,100.
Article 2 has been moved and seconded. Is ready discussion? Hearing not seen none. All those in favor of Article 2, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying no? Passes your hand, Mr. Walto. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to adopt the schedule of compensation for elected officials for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschina.
I move that the town vote to adopt a schedule of compensation for elected officials for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, as follows. Moderator, $405. Town clerk, $53,490. Select Board Chair, $4,737. Other Select Board members, $3,770.
Article 3 has been moved and seconded. Is ready discussion? Hearing not seen none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by saying no. Passes your hand, Mr. Walto. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to determine what sums of money the town will raise in the appropriate, including appropriations from sewer user fees and to defray charges and expenses and debt services for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, or to take any other action in relation thereto. I'm sorry, 4. No. No. I read the article.
I move that the amounts of money set forth in the printed report of the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2020 in totaling $7,631,650 be appropriated for the several purposes therein itemized, each number item being considered as a separate appropriation, and that the same be expended only for such purposes.
It's been moved and seconded. Normally what we do under this article is we go by different categories to see if people have questions on any particular category. So I'm going to ask first on general government. Does anybody have any questions or comments on general government? It's going to be on page 9 of the hand up again with your annual reports. General Government totals, $1,119,880. Public Safety. Any question, discussion on public safety? Public Safety total, $1,320,500. Education. Vocational education. This totals $579,168. Any discussion, any comments? Public Works. Public Works totals, $1,9282. Any comments, any questions, any discussion? Yes?
Hi, this is Richard Paul again. As to the maintenance, it's got salaries for 2019, the $18,000. And then for 2020, it's got a $9,426. Seems quite a big jump. Could that be explained? Thank you.
Mr. Droschina.
That increase is a... We had to move some personnel from the Highway Department to the Sewer Division so that they could accomplish more work within that group. But it's basically, it's a league. It's a swing from the Highway Department budget. You'll notice that the Highway Department budget went down, $25,000 roughly. And then we had a subsequent increase in the sewer maintenance. Basically, it's so that we can follow regulations before by DEP and EPA.
But what we're just looking at, I see what you're talking about, but it's not a difference of $25,000. I think it's an increase from $18,000 to $9,400.
Actually, the number of hours with that increased as well. We did have to increase. We did have to increase the budget anyways. But in that case, we increased it to a greater amount to accomplish what we need to accomplish. So it was an increase in budget overall. We also, we had to add one more person to that group. That's where that came in. So does that answer the question?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Human Services. Human Services totals, $347,526. Yes?
Deb Cole, Duffin Green, Talbro. I'm just wondering, I haven't been to a town meeting in a couple of years, why there's zero in the line items for mental health services?
About two years ago, we actually were... That was part of a grant that we were receiving. So what we did was about two years ago, the grant dried up, and we stopped. Basically, we stopped funding it. Mental Services, generally, as far as I know, they landed under, I believe, Public Health and other... They spread out over other parts of Public Health portion of the budget. Does that... that did answer?
No. Had I been here last year, I would have asked because for years, all the towns have been... Berkshire County had a contribution, I believe it was to the Green Center. Each town, because that's the umbrella agency, if you will, of the county, would make a contribution. So was there any, you know, either pushback or consideration from that agency in this town around how our residents can be receiving that contribution? So that's basically for folks who don't have insurance, and they could then be served.
Yes. We made a small grant to Green Center for years and years. It was about $2,000. It became increasingly difficult to do that because the town required certain information from the agency. The agency wasn't giving us the information that we needed. And my recommendation, two years ago, was to stop funding it because the cooperative relationship we have with the agency wasn't working out. We weren't getting the information we needed to make the grant. And the Finance Committee, the Select Board, accepted my recommendation.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, Cheryl Rose, North Island Road. I just have a question about the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission amount. And I'm just wondering, how is that determined? And do all the towns pay the same amount? Because my understanding is that Dalton actually pays twice we pay for the Fire District, and we pay because through the Select Board. Is that correct? And I'm just wondering how the amount is figured out. Do all the towns pay the same? And do we also pay that through the Fire District? If you know the answer to that. So are we paying double?
Mr. Walto.
There's a precap of assessment that the Regional Planning Commission is able to assess each municipality. So ours would differ. It's different by the population of each community. I do not know if the Fire District is assessed. I don't believe that they are, but I do not know.
Anyone else on Human Services? Culture and Recreation. Total's $259,688. Any discussion? Debt Service, $598,505. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Tony Hagley, Ulo again. The increase is in the neighborhood of 60%. Could each of those line items be explained?
That's a bit of a challenge to find them. This budget covers capital improvements that the town has done with relationship to, of course, debt and interest. And we've been through several building projects within the town. The Who's House, the Senior Center, Town Hall, Carpets Forcing Remodeling that was done in Town Hall, the fire alarm system, Dalton High demolition. These are all part of our debt service that this encompasses. And to break it out individually... We have capital improvement projects, like the Green Community, Grand Public Works, the Dalton Division Road Engineering. That's all encompassed within this. Or some of it, we haven't completely uncovered. So I can cover, like, for instance, the demolition? So make sure I remember the correct number. I'm putting them out there. The Capital Stabilization is a fund that we, from year to year, we put money in that pool. We actually got to put some in that this evening. And that's where we draw from and use some debt and interest from that as well, through capitalization. And it's actually a large list of projects that that covers. And then you move down to the... That was the capital improvement. And then we have sewer drains, larger issues there. Like, we have sewer engineering studies, Who's Sonic Lateral in Flansburgh Ave, the sewer interceptor, sewer infiltration study, sewer drain projects, and another sewer interceptor we use. We also have some engineering work that's being done. And these are all part of the sewer. And this is paid for through the sewer user fees. So you'll find those down at the bottom for $116,012. And then the capital improvement projects, those others, they end up at around $270,000. These numbers actually go down generally over a period of time. And we've had quite a few issues with our sewer systems and some capital projects trying to just improve, I suppose, improve life around the town of Dalton. And we've been a little short on... That's what this is kind of all about. Was I able to answer your question?
Thank you. Just one more thing.
Yep.
In terms of the sewer and drain, do you expect that to be more of an issue in the future? Additional expense?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We can anticipate a fair number of repairs coming for that. I believe we have a study plan. We have a sewer repair study plan that's going to be taking place sometime within the next year or two. So we also have that. And of course, we've got the engineering for Old Dalton, to finish up Old Dalton High, and then also the anti-medi for Dalton Division Road to take care of. So we've got some pretty big things sitting on our plate. Thank you.
Anyone else on Debt Service?
James Driscoll, 69th Lady Hall Road. Is that all the debt services that the town has? In other words, the town's only $598,000 in debt? Or is it closer to $1.2 million in program book? I'm getting a little confused when you're saying this is debt services. So where's the figure come... That's in the booklet itself, insuring debt and interest schedules?
This year, what you're seeing here is just the town's debt service. What might be getting confused a little bit is the debt service for the school district. You might be seeing that number included as well?
No.
No?
Page 70, or rather, page 71 in the booklet, it lists the town's insuring debt and interest schedule as $1,267,000. So has that the total debt the town's carrying?
That $1,267,000, the remaining unpaid balance on our debt. So we've got $1.2 million roughly left on our debt. As you can see, some of it will be coming off as time goes on here in the next few years.
I'm sorry, that's not my question. My question is, why do we have debt service of over $500,000 in the category we're discussing now, and a total debt of $1.2 million that the town's actually carrying? They're two... It's the same amount. The debt's the debt. I just want to know, because later on, we're going to vote on a debt exclusion for the high school. I want to know how much debt the town's carrying at this point. And so I want to... I'm asking this question now because I don't want to be out of the category later on. Because I don't see it in the category anyplace else where you mentioned you're paying your share of debt and interest on the town's loans.
This is moderator Joel Barr, Town Council. So the number that's in the annual report is the town's total debt obligation. And that's spread out over a number of years. So with these debts, the town has a legal obligation to pay them off. The number that you're voting on tonight is just the debt and interest payments that will be due in the next fiscal year. These numbers here will be paid out over a number of years. So that's why the numbers are different. Each year, you pay a certain number. Some debt items go up in the, say, second or third year, and then they go down in the final years. But the number each year is going to vary, and this represents what you're paying. If you look at one of the columns, it tells you the date of issue. So the longer ago, the top one, for instance, was issued in '09. So that debt's presumably coming to an end. Whereas at the bottom, you see some that were issued just in the last year or two. So it's a varying number from year to year.
So this is the principal interest payment for this year's share of the town debt? Is that what we're saying? So we're going to spend $500... Almost $600,000 on the debt of $1.2 million?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Debt Service?
Thanks. I just have one more question, and I don't know if you have... Oh, again, Cheryl, North Island Road, sorry. So $600,000, or almost $600,000, seems like a huge amount that we're paying on a million dollars owed. So do you have any idea, like, after this payment is made, how much debt is left? Because that sounds like such a big number to be paying on just a million dollars, like 60% of it. So are we really paying it down a lot? And it's almost gone after that, or half, or something? Just curious.
Take a step. Town morals are in very short maturity, usually five years. So we're paying about a fifth of it off each year. That's why you're seeing a big number there.
Anyone else on Debt Service?
Mary Cherry, 34 Patricia Avenue. Just as a point of clarification, this is total outstanding debts as of June 30, 2018. of two thousand and eighteen. I imagine there are more debts than are listed here. Did we not incur any debt last year? Just...
We haven't reached the amount of debt we have in two thousand and nineteen yet, but we won't reach that till the end of June. This is as of the end of last fiscal year. So we don't, actually, we won't know the exact number until the nineteenth, until the twenty-thirtieth of June of this year. So I can't really answer that question at this point.
It wasn't a question, I was just pointing there.
Can I just make a comment? The amount of debt we're paying is... Oh, sorry. Sandy Almeno, Town Accountant, six oh nine South Street, Dalton. The amount of debt, that five hundred and sixty-two, whatever it is, for the two thousand and twenty budget, is the FY nineteen estimated debt. And we're going to pay that in two thousand and twenty. I don't know if that clears anything up?
Thank you. Anyone else on debt service, Mr. Grouchy?
I have a question. Tom Manager, just a quick, we have...
Hold on a second. I can hear you.
I have a question. Almeno, twenty-four Elaine Avenue. Tom Manager just said we have, we borrowed over a five-year period. Yet as I look at the page opposite seventy-one, we started out with a million one ten, and we still have a balance of seven, five hundred and sixty-five. That's ten years old. What do we, what do you make of explanation here?
There are, there are some debts that are for a longer period. We borrowed for a plenty of period to do repairs to the Town Hall to buy some equipment a number of years ago. So while most of the debt is short-term, it was over five years, there's a portion of it went up twenty years.
Anyone else on debt service? Okay, last category, other. Other totals one million, five hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Any questions, any comments, any discussion on the category other?
Richard Hall, one six four Green Ridge. In the main pamphlet, I think because this is other, maybe a question I can ask, on page fifty-six, under motor vehicle excise, in two thousand and seventeen, it's showing receipts of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, and in two thousand and eighteen, seven hundred and eighty-four. Does that mean we're all driving beamers in town? Thank you.
May I answer the question?
Sorry, page fifty-six of the main brochure, under motor, in the middle, motor vehicle excise, from two thousand and seventeen, it went from one hundred and seventy-three thousand to two thousand and eighteen, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. Just wondering why the big change?
Yeah, I think it's due to the depreciation schedule. You bring out a card value that has full value, you get that big hit, the excise tax the first year, and then it depreciates fairly rapidly after that.
Those are model years, that's not fiscal year, that's not calendar year. That's the model year of the car that is being taxed. Any other discussion under the category other? Okay, Article four has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Are you opposed by saying no? Thank you, it passes. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, a sum of money for the purpose of providing recreation and leisure time activities to the people of Dalton, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Grouchy?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, for the purpose of providing recreation and leisure time activities to the people of Dalton.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, saying none, all those in favor of Article five signify by saying aye. Those opposed by saying no. Thank you, it passes unanimously. Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of paying the town's share of the operating budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Grouchy?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate seven million, eight hundred, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the purpose of paying the town's share of the operating budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Tony Caglone, below, in Joe Road. I have a question regarding the amount in excess and deficiency. I wonder if that could be explained? I have a couple of questions around that. How much was given over last year? How much is remaining? And the expectation for next year?
Do we have a major school?
So I can...
Here's the microphone, identify yourself.
So I can certainly verbally try, but honestly, it's in the budget guidelines from the school committee that dictates exactly how much is given year to year, depending...
First identify yourself first.
I apologize, that I do know. I'm Lori Cass, I'm the superintendent for Central Berkshire. So the Central Berkshire School Committee has budget guidelines that dictates how much is given. It's about a paragraph in length, so I, I can certainly read it to you if I can look it up, but I can't dictate it off the top of my head, to be honest. So that's really how it works. Whatever is the, the percentage that's left, if it's over a certain amount, a percentage goes back to the district. If it's under a certain amount, a percentage goes back to the town. This year, there was a small amount beyond that that was returned to the towns. That's that eleven thousand that you do see. That's the only change from last year.
I guess my question is still, still stands. How much was given over last year? How much remains this year, and what's expected next year?
So I would not be able to answer what's expected next year, other than to quote the budget guidelines as far as a dollar figure. What was given over, this year is in here as well as last year. In FY nineteen, it was one million, one hundred and eleven dollars, one hundred and six, one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixteen. And this year, it was slightly larger, one million, one hundred, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's a percentage of what was left that's dictated by the budget guidelines. So if you look on page six, it shows you exactly what was given back to the towns in FY nineteen and in FY twenty. The number would be consistent with the same percentage next year, which has tracked pretty consistent around that. But the exact number would just be a percentage that's required to be given, given back based on what's in their total at the end of next year. So that's FY can tell you exactly what was given back in FY nineteen, one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. I can tell you exactly what was given back this year. I don't know what will be given back next year beyond according to the budget guidelines.
And what remains? What remains in that account?
I don't have that exact number right now. It's going to be calculated right with the end of the year. So I, sir, I don't have that number for you right now.
Just one follow-up question, I'm sorry. I guess my question, that's a significant amount of money. I'm just curious how that money accumulates. That's money that's not spent on the operating budget for this year, that's given back to communities? Just some clarification.
So a certain portion, so a certain portion of excess and deficiency is required to be applied to the budget each year. That's what's in the budget that you see, and that a balance of it is able to be carried. That's exactly what you see is the percentage that was in there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Tom Callahan, North Street. I'd like to commend the superintendent's office for doing an outstanding job managing the fiscal aspects of this school budget. Everybody knows our regional district is a nightmare to manage. Just last week, at a meeting with the finance committee here in Dalton, the superintendent's office was commended for its fiscal management over the last several years. It is very unusual to get those kinds of recommendations, especially with what we're trying to do right around this time, and that is to look at building a new school. On that matter, on behalf of the school building committee, we thank the select board and the finance committee for their recent recommendations to follow through with these budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Judy Way, here, four oh five High Street. I just got one question for the school committee. When we do have to cut the budget from the town and sacrifice police, or whatever we got to do to cut the budget for the six hundred thousand, is school going to take this sacrifice too, or is it just the Town Hall?
So I do, just two things. I do want to address it, and Mr. Callahan is right, the complexities of our regional, and I don't want to address something fiscally that's less than accurate. So I do just, this is the first time we've been asked a specific question outside of being able to sit in front of a computer, which is what happens at the finance subcommittee meetings that people are certainly welcome to attend. But it is all but five percent of excess and deficiency is given back. The balance sits in the bank. What that means is that if we have a million dollars, then all but two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of it is given back. And if we have less than that, it's essentially all returned to the towns. So that probably, if you are able to retain that, then that's excellent. If you do want to email my office tomorrow, I can send you the quote from the budget guidelines. But essentially, seventy-five percent of excess and deficiency every year is returned to the towns in order to offset the assessments, and a small percentage of it is carried year over year. As far as the other piece of it, the district is more than aware of the concerns of the town. We can't predict budgets year over year. We do have contractual requirements, things of that nature. There are certainly discretionary things that we can be fiscally responsible about. We do have to prioritize making sure the students of Central Berkshire have what they need to be educated, but we certainly are aware of the constraints on the town at the same time. If you do notice, this budget is less than a one percent increase. So this is a point eight-two percent increase with a decrease of what was asked for from Dalton. Dalton's increase was seen because of the state requiring local contribution that went up slightly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, saying none. Article six has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Are you opposed by saying no? It passes unanimously. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of paying the town's share of the transportation budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, or to take in any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Grouchy?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and six thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars for the purpose of paying the town's share of the transportation budget of Central Berkshire Regional School District for, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, saying none. All those in favor of, of favor of Article seven signify by saying aye. Are you opposed by saying no? It passes unanimously. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of paying the town's share of the capital budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Grouchy?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate... Raise and appropriate one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars for, for the purpose of paying the town's share of the capital budget of the Central Berkshire Regional School District for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, saying none. All those in favor of Article eight signify by... Yes.
Judy Way, here, then, High Street. Okay, there's some appropriations here for Wakona that are going to put through, and then once the school's torn down, we're still paying the debt on, on all the improvements for Wakona. I mean, why bother at this point? You haven't done, done it up to this point, and now all of a sudden, you're going to do it and then put more debt on the town?
Who wants to respond?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I fully understand the question. Oh, sorry. I anticipate the question is about line three, about the FY twenty-twenty-two. We are, that's absolutely correct. We took on debt for projects at Wakona that were completed, and, and we owe, we owe it. So it would be no different than if you did renovations on a house that you then decided that you were going to reconstruct. So that absolutely is true. There were updates done at Wakona. This is the debt on those that was already agreed to that has to be paid regardless of the, the new building project. So if that's what the question's about, that's an act, that's absolutely correct. There is debt still being paid on projects for Wakona that was agreed to quite some time back.
So these are not new bills, these are the old ones?
No, exactly.
Anyone else? Hearing none, saying none. All those in favor of Article eight signify by saying aye. Are you opposed by saying no? Thank you, that passes. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the reserve fund account one thirty-two for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, or to take in any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Grouchy?
I move that the town vote to transfer sixty-five thousand dollars from free cash in treasury to account one thirty-two, reserve fund fiscal, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen.
We've moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of article nine signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Thank you. That passes. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to transfer, transfer or appropriate from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of reducing the expected tax rate increase in the two thousand twenty fiscal year, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Goshen.
I move that the town vote to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from free cash in treasury for the purpose of reducing the expected tax, tax rate increase in the two thousand twenty fiscal year.
We've moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor? Answer yes.
Just a question, Bill. How much are we remaining in free cash and how much is in stabilization?
We're, we're starting this, uh, this coming fiscal year with, uh... One point six million dollars in free cash. The, we have some other budgets coming up, so some other articles coming up that will address the, the large portion of this free cash. So I guess after, after this article's approved, free cash will be set at, at one point four million dollars, and then, and we'll go down accordingly as we go along the process. That, that should...
And stabilization?
Stabilization, when it comes to stabilization, we'll get down to article fourteen. There'll be a, a, a list of, of what we have, our various stabilization accounts, and then I can talk to those when we get down there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of article ten signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the landfill monitoring continuing appropriation account number nine nine one to the landfill closure account number four three four, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Goshen.
I move that the town vote to transfer fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars from the landfill monitoring account nine nine one to the landfill closure account four three three for fiscal year, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen.
We've moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of article eleven signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Passes unanimously. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to rescind an authorization to borrow seventy-five thousand dollars for extraordinary sewer system expenses approved at the special town meeting held on June twenty-five, two thousand eighteen under article four, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Goshen.
I move that the town vote to rescind an authorization to borrow twenty-five thousand... Seventy-five thousand dollars for extraordinary sewer system expenses approved at the special town meeting held on June twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen under article four.
We've moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Um, I just wonder if you can please explain or to take any other action in relation thereto, such as... Explain that, please. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Joel Hart, Town Council. So you'll see that most articles, if not all of them, have that tag phrase at the end or take any other action in relation thereto. And the reason it's there is so it's not to bind town meeting to the literal wording of the article. So it allows some leeway. So for, sometimes there may be a specific number in the article to raise and appropriate, let's say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if it doesn't say or take any other action in relation thereto, some strict constructionists, if you will, would say that you can only raise and appropriate a hundred and fifty. You can't if for some reason it turns out that a hundred and eighty thousand is needed. You couldn't do that if you didn't have that phrase. Similarly, with articles that have to do with text rather than numbers, if you didn't have that phrase, people would argue that you can only pass what's written exactly in the warrant, in the article. Now, there's still, that phrase doesn't mean that it's open season. Any change that's made has to be, did I anticipate the question? The, um, any change has to be within the scope of the article. It's the legal phrase. In other words, you can't go crazy. If the article says a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you couldn't look to raise, let's say, half a billion, but you couldn't. And it's within the moderator's discretion as to how much leeway you have. Similarly, sometimes if there's, for example, a zoning article, there might be an amendment to make some kind of modest change to it, but you couldn't greatly expand it from what was written. The idea behind the warrant is that it gives warning, it gives notice to the residents of the town as to what's to be discussed at the town meeting. So any, any discussion, any motion under an article has to be within the scope of that article.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of article twelve signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the reserve fund account one thirty-two for the remainder of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Goshen.
I move that no action is taken under this article.
Is there any discussion? So, so, right, all in favor of taking no action under article thirteen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed signify by, signify by saying no? Thank you. No action on article thirteen. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer and/or appropriate from available funds a sum of money to each of the following stabilization funds: general stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, litigation stabilization fund, and sewer stabilization fund, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Goshen.
I move that the town vote to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from free cash in treasury in the following amounts to the following stabilize, stabilization funds: two hundred thousand dollars to the sewer stabilization fund, one hundred thousand dollars to the general stabilization fund, five, uh, fifty thousand dollars to the litigation stabilization fund, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the capital stabilization fund. And further, the said transfer be made prior to June thirtieth.
We've moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Henry Rose, North Mountain Road. I'm sorry, I don't know what a stabilization fund is. Henry Rose.
We're gonna have to say it again.
Henry Rose, North Mountain Road. I'm sorry, I don't know what a stabilization fund is. Thank you.
Mr. Bahr.
Mr. Moderator, Joel Hart, Town Council. Uh, so the general rule municipal finances is that any income that comes into the town has to go into the general fund, and then has to come to town meeting to be appropriated out. The general rule is you can't earmark funds. However, there are some exceptions, and these stabilization funds are exceptions. So, um, and, and the other exception is, or the other aspect of it is that once you put money into a stabilization fund, it stays there from year to year. Everything that's voted, that was voted earlier in the budget, if you voted a quarter of a million dollars for a certain item and only two hundred thousand was spent instead of two hundred and fifty, the remaining fifty thousand would roll into actually as free cash. That's how free cash builds up, is from legged items that aren't spent. The stabilization funds, however, remain fixed. So when you're voting into these stabilization funds, they're then available for expenditure in future years. You can build up funds for these purposes as you see described here.
Anyone else?
Yes, um, I, the answer to my earlier question.
Yeah, they're done.
I understand. Uh, oh, Tony, thank you. I guess my question is, in lieu of the increase in taxes next year, my understanding is that free cash can be used to offset tax increases. But if these monies go into stabilization, as was pointed out, they can't be used to offset any tax increases. Given that, I guess my question now would be, the litigation fund, is there more to that? Could you speak to that? That's quite a bit of money.
Mr. Bahr.
Mr. Moderator, Joel Hart. So I guess to complete the explanation, so money in stabilization funds can be expended, and they'd be expended by vote of town meeting. It does take a two-thirds vote, and town meeting is not necessarily bound to these purposes. So for instance, the litigation fund, uh, if it's determined that we don't need three hundred thousand dollars and we haven't lately needed it, town meeting could appropriate from the litigation stabilization fund by a two-thirds vote and say, take out a hundred thousand dollars for a purpose that might otherwise have been, in a normal year, let's say, paid for out of taxes, which is the raise and appropriation. So the idea behind, as you'll see, there's a general litigation fund, the capital litigation fund, so we just, to talk, for example, about capital. The idea is communities do want to build up a capital fund so that if you want to buy an expensive, uh, piece of equipment, for instance, let's say a fire truck, which is very expensive, it comes out of the capital fund. And town meeting is sort of, it's a, it's a savings account, a bunch of savings accounts that town meeting is setting aside for the town, but the town could decide to defer some of those funds, they can spend it as they wish. Actually, that's all.
I'm sorry to persist. I guess my question was, with the request, litigation fund will be up at four hundred and fifty thousand. I'm just curious why that's such a large amount? And secondly, can those stabilization funds be used to offset any increase in the taxes, or does it have to come from free cash?
No, it doesn't have to come from free cash.
Mr. Driscoll.
James Driscoll, sixty-nine St. Haller Road. Um, I'm just curious why the transfer has to be made by June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen, which puts it into this fiscal year, and why it's not being put into next fiscal year like most of the other things we're doing tonight?
There's a simple answer to that. It's free cash. Um, there's a hold on free cash at the end of the fiscal year until, uh, the Department of Revenue certifies our free cash. So that's a directive to make sure, to, to us, the administration, to make sure it gets done.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of article fourteen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no? Passes unanimously. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer and/or appropriate from available funds a sum of money to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund to reduce the unfunded actuarial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Goshen.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of six hundred thousand dollars from free cash in treasury to the other post-employment benefits trust fund for the purpose of reducing the unfunded actuarial, actuarial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits, and further, that said transfer be made prior to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of article fifteen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying no? Passes unanimously. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to reauthorize employment agreements between the town and the highway cemetery superintendent, the highway cemetery foreman, and the police sergeant, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Bartels.
Article sixteen, I move that the town vote to reauthorize employment agreements between the town and highway cemetery superintendent, the highway cemetery foreman, and the police sergeant.
We've moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of article sixteen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying no? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to authorize payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Goshen.
I move that the town vote to authorize payment of an unpaid bill of one thousand and one hundred and thirty-three dollars to KP Law for fiscal year eighteen pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four.
We've moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, in favor of article seventeen signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying no? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to recess until Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, at ten o'clock a.m. to eight p.m., to meet in the Dalton Community House to choose and elect the following town officers and the determination of such other matters as are by law required to be determined by ballot. Two members of the select board for three years, one moderator for one year, two members of the planning board for three years, one cemetery trustee for three years, one Dalton housing authority for five years, three migrant trustees for three years, and six members of the finance committee for three years. Also, question number one, going to regional high school. Shall the town of Dalton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amount required to pay for its share of the bonds or notes issued by the Central Berkshire Regional School District in order to pay for the engineering, design, construction, and equipping of a new Wacona regional high school and costs related thereto, including demolition of the former high school and borrowing costs associated with said project, and all other costs incidental or related thereto? Mr. Goshen.
I move that the town vote to recess until Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, ten o'clock a.m., to meet at the Dalton Community House until eight p.m., to choose and elect the following town officers. Two members of select board... Two members of select boards for three years, one moderator for one year, two members of the planning board for three years, one cemetery trustee for three years, one Dalton Housing Authority member for five years, three library trustees for three years, six finance committee members for three years. And to also vote upon ballot question one as follows. Wacona Regional High School, shall the town of Dalton be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for its share of bonds or notes issued by the Central Berkshire Regional School District in order to pay for the engineering, design, construction, equipping of a new Wacona Regional High School, and costs related thereto, including demolition of the former high school, and borrowing costs associated with said project, and all other costs incidental or related thereto.
Set.
They're moved in second, as a point of clarification, I understand that the town website identifies the voting to be from 8 a.m., I'm sorry, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. It is after 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Is there any discussion on Article 18? Yes, in the back. She's gone.
Thank you. Jane Jim, Sunny Side Drive. I'd like some explanation from the select board or the town manager regarding the question, if we vote yes, what does that imply, and if we vote no, what does that imply? And regardless of the vote, does that mean that the school is still already voted in and there's no change in that? Am I correct in that part?
Thank you.
May I ask one of the select board members?
Mr. Bartels.
Jane, make sure I address all your questions. First and foremost, on this ballot question, no matter how you vote on this ballot question, yes or no, the new Wacona High School will be built. That is a definite. What we're here, or not here tonight, but on May 13th, is a decision on how the town will pay for its part, its part of the debt of building the new Wacona High School. Voting yes, and Ken, correct me if I'm wrong on this, voting yes will allow us to pay the debt through taxation, over, not over and above, but well, over and above the restrictions of Proposition 2 and 1/2. See, we're only allowed to tax the townspeople so much, 2 and 1/2% over the budget that we have each year. This will be more than that. Our liability will be more than that. So we are asking that the town allows us to do that taxation over and above 2 and 1/2. So if a no vote takes place, then we can't do that, and we can only tax up to a certain amount. The amount of liability for the new high school each year will be approximately $1.6 million that we would have to pay. We could probably tax up to about a million dollars under 2 and 1/2, under Proposition 2 and 1/2, the way we tax now. But that leaves us $600,000 more to pay. So where would it come from? It comes from the municipal budget. And if that's the case, we would have to find somewhere in the municipal budget the $7 million and change from that, from our budget, from our side of the budget. $600,000, $500,000 to $600,000 to cut, and that would be services and personnel, that's where you get it from. That's the long and short of it, really. That's a, that's a short story. So I don't know if that answered your question, Jane, but in simple terms, that's what we're looking at with this vote.
Yes, Jane.
Just one more comment, if I may. So I would suggest everyone here that we vote yes, so that town services, employment will not be cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Nato.
Al Nato, 24 Elaine Avenue. Let's face reality, this isn't a debt exclusion that's going to be temporary. You're looking at, what, 30 years plus? So for us that are 60 years and over, we're going to be paying this the rest of our lives. That's a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, which this town has not voted for in the last 20 years. This is just a sneaky way of getting this through. But what we really have to look at is what does this do when you get cost over, cost coming in from the Pitts Hill Sewerage Wastewater Treatment Plant? What do you get when you look at the infrastructure that we have here in town with streets that need resurfacing? We've got some debts coming along on top of this school that is going to put this town on a verge of bankruptcy. My biggest question is, we now have a major employer in town that used to be locally owned, they're not anymore. You, they're, they're out of business. So if this is a major impact for them, will they be Dalton's, Pitts Hill G?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jacob Roy, Apple Tree Lane. My question is, it looks like the, the increase won't be until 2021, fiscal year 21, is that correct?
Mr. Bartels.
It's kind of a two-part question here.
It, it could be fiscal '21 or '22.
Okay.
There may be some short-term bonding, from what I understand, in FY '21, but the full amount would probably be FY '22.
Great. So the second part of the question is related to the cash discussion tonight, and money being moved between cash and stabilization. Would the town have the opportunity to come back next year on the town floor and look at cash differently as relates to the capital debt pertaining to this project? That is, to apply more free cash into driving down the expenses that we're going to see that $1.6, which you're saying?
As the town council explained, from stabilization funds and free cash, the town can do pretty much what it wants in paying off the step. However, Department of Revenue recommends not to use one-time sources of funding to pay ongoing operational expenses. We're going to face a million and a half dollars for the next 30 years. The best way to do that is through permission to additional taxation, and that's why the select board agreed to place a this ballot question on the warrant. Should we become up short? Now, 10 years ago, you may all remember, we ran into a fiscal crisis, and for a number of years, we were bouncing around at zero levy capacity. So our levy capacity has come back, we can levy a certain amount. Even if we pay for this under our existing levy capacity, at least part of it, it doesn't change the fact that we have to pay a million and a half dollars. But the short answer to the question is yes, the town can always apply cash to payment of part of that million and a half dollars.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing not seen none, Article 18, is moved in second, all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.